Commissioner Badwick?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda would be invocation. We have Pastor Mark Somerville with Family Worship Center to lead us in invocation.
Short bars and prayer. Gracious Father, we're grateful tonight that we can come to you this evening and ask for your wisdom, for your guidance, for your direction upon our city council this evening. We pray you'll direct their plans and continue to bless them in all their labors. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next is Pledge of Allegiance. We have guests today. The Cub Scout Troop 222 is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. Troop, we have Cub Scout Troop 222.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we're staying, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cub Scout. May they return to their seats. And they are welcome to join us, the whole meeting, or not, whatever you choose, parents and Cub Scout troops. So, thank you for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Next thing on our agenda would be personal proclamations. Having none, personal appearances, and having none of those, public comment. Anyone from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on from public comment to consent agenda. The agenda in our packet was sent last week to everyone, every, with minutes from our August 5th and our July 31st meeting. An appropriation, any questions or comments on our consent agenda? There are none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
Okay, so moved in second. Any further question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Okay. Old business. Our old business would be our 2020 excess sales tax projects. This is projects that we have talked about in work session and tabled at our last meeting, but move on with it today. These dollars have been included in our budget, which we approved. It's just a matter of how they get spent. Anything else we want to necessarily talk about, or do you have any question or comment?
No, City Commission. The excess sales tax committee provided two recommendations. The first recommendation included the senior center parking lot, McDonald Stadium, Project Bank, Public Works roof replacement, fire station number one doors, North Main Playground replacement, miniature golf course funding, oil museum sign replacement funding, El Dorado Main Street facade grant funding, and funding for the Chamber of Commerce grant program. Recommendation number two includes a change to that depending on if the commission wanted to fund the miniature golf course or not, and so that's included there for your reference. But the city commission, you guys have reviewed and discussed that, and so unless you have any other questions, the recommendation, the initial recommendation, yeah, the initial recommendation of the task force was that first recommendation, and then they made the second recommendation based upon a contingency if the miniature golf course was not funded. So, with that, I'll take any questions you may have at this time.
In our agenda, or in our packet here, it talks about recommendation one being to move arena study funds and other non-distributed funds from past years into, do we need to act twice, one, to do that, or does that...
Yes.
There's two motions.
Yeah, there's two motions, sorry.
Two motions in your package.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, just to clarify on that, the prior award for that was $30,000, and so what we're asking you to do is reallocate those funds to, I believe, other sales tax projects that have not been defined in the list here, if I'm correct.
No.
No, they're all in this, right?
The motion puts the $30,000 back in the excess sales tax fund, and the committee made a recommendation to spend the money they had this year, including that $30,000.
Right.
So, if you don't want to put that back, you have to take $30,000 off their recommendation.
So, everything in recommendation two includes the $30,000 from previous years?
Yes.
Okay. Any question or comments or further discussion? I will say I would appreciate the work of the sales tax committee. Every year they assemble and give recommendations on how to spend the excess sales tax. I appreciate their work and their recommendation. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to reallocate the excess sales tax funds from the area arena feasibility study to the excess sales tax fund for use on other sales tax projects.
Second.
Okay, so moved in second. Any further question or comment on the motion for the $30,000 arena feasibility study? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Okay?
Second one?
Next one would be recommendation for how to spend the allocation of the funds as recommended.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept for consideration the projects presented by the excess sales tax committee in recommendation number two.
Second.
It's moved in seconded on, to move forward with recommendation number two for the excess sales funds. Any further question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Aye. Motion carries three to one. Next on our agenda is condemnation hearings. We've had some conversation about blighted properties, and so someone from staff here to speak to on that?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, we're asking you tonight to consider passing a resolution considering five homes, 1107 West Carr, 1108 West Carr, 426 West 7th, 802 South Taylor, and 205 North Washington, dangerous and unfit. With that consideration of a resolution, the commission is, if they so desire, give that owner a certain number of days to either repair the structure or have it removed. Within that resolution as well, if that repair or the removal of the structure has not commenced by that date you set, then as the resolution is before you this evening, the city then would take action to remove that structure.
Okay.
If that so be the outcome, we do have a balance in our building demolition fund that we think would be sufficient to take care of that.
All five of them? Okay.
Officer Hagan is here this evening, and building official Scott Peachin is here as well. If you have any specific questions on each home, or anything else regarding the properties, we do have some photos that we can show you, but if you all want to consider the public hearing first.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the public hearing first. Notice of, as notice have been sent out to property owners?
Property owners, any persons of interest, anything we found when we did title searches on all these properties, so notification was sent out to all interested parties and owners.
Now, wasn't there one in an estate?
There, I don't know if there's one in an estate.
No, I don't believe. We had two of them that were, I had to see stovers.
But they passed on?
Yeah, two of the others.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Okay. Were adjacent property owners notified as well of the public hearing?
They're aware. A lot of this, to be honest, has been driven by those adjacent property owners. There's a number of homes that are red stickered, which are deemed by staff as unsafe, unfit, and a lot of what you have before you tonight, it was driven by adjacent property owners in just wanting to see some resolution to structures adjacent or in the neighborhood that were causing them issues.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Being done, we open up the meeting for a public hearing on the notice for the demolition of the homes, or condemnation, demolition of homes at 101 West 1107 West Carr, 1108 West Carr, 426 West 7th, 802 South Taylor, and 205 North Washington. At this time, we'll open up for public hearing. Who I wish to address the commission on this matter? Please come forth, state your name and address.
My name is Tom Nadekav. I live at 800 South Taylor. Ever since buying my property about two and a half years ago, I've had issues with the property south of me, which is 802 South Taylor. Had issues with my sump pump constantly running because they had a bad sewer line, so it was actually putting sewage into my sump basin. It's got a tree that has already half fallen down, part of which hangs over my property and another neighboring property. So, I've worried about taking the part hanging over my house down and causing it to fall on the other property. I've had bugs coming into my property because the property maintenance company never cleaned it out when the last people moved out. It's just, it's a great eyesore. I've reached out to the company, myself and through my attorney, trying to buy the property from them, and they've stated that they wouldn't even consider an offer less than $25,000, which didn't make any sense to me with, you know, as much as it's going to cost to tear the property down and get it to where I could even do anything with the property. So, I would really, you know, ask that you guys move on this property and do something about it. They've ceased further communication with me, they won't communicate with me or my attorney trying to get repairs done at this time.
Now, are you right there at the corner of...
Of Kansas and Taylor.
The southeast?
Yes.
Yeah, southeast corner?
Yeah, southeast corner, yes. I did go around the neighborhood, and I did get a petition signed by quite a few residents in the area that I did turn in to the engineering department for consideration of this as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission on this matter? Please state your name and address.
Anita Mitchell, 25 North Washington. I had tried to do work with my property, and I just finally figured out I couldn't. And then I went to talk to Sudgreen, and they told me that it would be best to leave the property standing, and I did sign the contract with them, and I do have it up for auction October the 1st at 6:00 p.m., and I have the paperwork with me. So, I'm hoping that that don't interfere with what I'm trying to do already. And in the process of all of this, I did have my son commit suicide, so things kind of got put on hold. We just got him history and done Saturday, so...
Sorry to hear that.
Like I said, I'm just going to have it auctioned off, and he's even gave me a paper to say what the property public even write.
Okay.
Which address is that, Anita?
205 North Washington.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry for your loss.
Anybody else wish to address the commission?
Is that going to make any difference if it's going to be auctioned?
It's up to us, isn't it?
Let's close it before we start a conversation. Anybody else? If not, then we'll close. We'll close the public hearing, and then have a conversation among the commissioners. I think Commissioner Wilkinson's question is valid. What does that action, I mean, if it happens within so many days, and a new owner takes possession of the property?
You know, being notified of this, in your property maintenance code, the new owner would have to assume the liability that there's currently issues, it's unsafe, it's unfit. I doubt that there's utilities to that structure. So, before those things be brought back online and it could be habitable, they would have to meet the building code and satisfy the building official on being able to get those services turned back on. So, you know, this has started with that current owner, so if there is a new owner that auctions October 1st, maybe there's some cleanup of the yard, or if this is one of those structures that has those issues, it's, you know, it'd be up to the commission if they wanted to wait until...
Can we ask Sarah what the issues were with...
Yeah, if both of them, would you mind, or...
Oh, sorry, Scott, and you too.
Not me, yeah, Scott Peachin. I've got your photos here.
Okay, so while they're pulling that up...
Look up the 1 and 205 North...
So, we vote on this today, we, I mean, I guess, I guess one question we should ask ourselves is how many days are we talking?
Right.
Thirty, sixty? For publication, is that right, Timothy?
Yeah, I was, that was part of my question too, what kind of timeline are we really dealing with?
I apologize, I do not know the answer to that.
It's from publication, so whatever day you put in the resolution, that would be, once it's published, they have that many days. And the way the resolution is worded before you tonight is that they commence repairs or removal by that date.
So, they could just, they could paint one side of their house, and we call that...
It's going to be my question, too.
I mean, and I'm just, I'm just being honest, that's what crosses my mind right now.
I have to feel with them, I realize they don't, they don't want to just get out the piece of property with nothing in hand, but it is in pretty bad shape. Got some pictures here of it. I was actually asked to terminate the power off of this house by West Art Energy because it was still live, and the structure of the house wouldn't even hold the service drop on it, so that's how it kind of started on my radar on it. So, roof's pretty old, foundation's really not in great shape. I don't know where to go, how you guys want to approach this, but I can't see that it would be a tremendous amount of value at auction, but we could, I guess, send it to a new owner, and they would have the same liability over the structure as...
Well, I'm going to make a stretch at this, but if it goes for auction, I imagine it'll be more for the lot than the structure.
Most likely.
Yes.
What's the size of the lot?
Yeah, that, this, I, I would have a really, really, really hard time rebuilding the structure. It's, it's in the shape that it would be difficult to do it. Anything's possible.
I'd say the property would be worth more money if the structure was gone.
No. No?
No. Jeremy Sudgreen, the man... I'm sorry, if you want to speak, I need you to come to the podium. Thank you.
Jeremy Sudgreen is who I'm working with, and it's, the paperwork has been signed that no matter what it brings, it goes to somebody else, but...
So, you have no reserve on it?
No. He says, he's, in this letter here that I've got, he says the property, the condition it's in right now is worth $5,500.
That's lot and structure?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
It's $5,500.
Fifty-five hundred, okay.
And it's with the understanding that they buy it as it is, and house was known like to be tore down, but we was told that it was best to have the, that structure still there because it was easier for them to get utility meters or something back on to where if we tore it down, but if we tore it down, it's going to be still valued about the same price.
Okay, so, okay, so what he, I guess you agree with what he just said was, is that, I mean, it, not worth more, but it's not going to be worth any less without it.
Yeah. He said between $5,000 and $2,000 is probably what we'll bring at auction.
Okay.
And the lot is 100 by 150.
Fair sized lot.
Good sized lot.
Yeah. Okay. Commission, the building is structured from the county at $130, and the property is valued at $5,620 right now, so...
So, $57?
Yeah, basically the lot.
So, yeah, part of this evening is for you all to hear evidence like that of what, of what an outcome may be, and for you to consider as well.
My point was, there's going to be a cost associated with tearing it down, tipping fees.
The taxpayer, yeah.
Correct. So, in my opinion, the lot, it would be worth more to a buyer if the structure was gone.
Will the tipping fees and the city moves forward with demolition, those costs get assessed to the property?
Yes. So, any cost that's incurred by the city of El Dorado to either repair, make safe, or remove will be added as a special assessment on the property.
So, along these lines, and with this, with this effort to try and auction it off, this particular property could be tabled until after?
After auction.
And acted on another time, right?
If that's, if that's all yours desire, or to set a timeline out far enough ahead, then maybe we could report back.
Whoever is the new owner has...
Since each address takes its own resolution, you can, you can set different timelines.
We did that purposely, so we could discuss...
In case somebody showed up, that makes sense.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I do have a question, though, for staff. On this particular property, we were given, like, on each property, we were given all of the, like a list, timeline of all of the contact and order tickets and whatnot for each of the five properties. Some had, some had two pages, some had, I can't remember, but what was, what is, for this property, what was the contact? Like, how, what was the timeline look like on that one, on this one?
We've been on this a year or better.
Longer than that.
Yeah, we've been on it well over, over a year.
Have we had to mow the property?
I believe that this one has been mowed. We have mowed this one, right?
No, the property owner has owned this property.
Okay.
Kept it.
I guess where I'm going with this is, is that, how much have we already spent on this property through the process, I guess is where I'm going.
Well, labor of the, of your officials here.
Just, but like, there's some of those properties we had to mow.
Yeah.
Like, we've, we've, we've done a lot of work to keep that property from being as blighted as, we've tried through the process.
Yeah, some, some of them.
Some we have, this is not one of them.
But I think the thing to consider here on some of these structures is the amount of hours that me and Seth put in these, and, okay...
I'm not discrediting that. I guess what I'm trying, in my head, trying to put information together.
For the, for letters as far as that goes, started back in 2009 for trash and grass. Then in 2017 is whenever we...
It came back on your radar?
Unfit, unsafe.
Yeah, which would have been at that point in time generated by the electric company.
Okay. Oh, the electric company, okay, that's the one that you, that's where you're going with?
Yeah, terminated the service because the, because the backside of the house was really not structurally sound enough to hold the service drop.
Is that the backside that I'm seeing?
This is, this is the front side, I don't know if we have a...
This is kind of towards the backside, right here is the backside of the property, where the tarp is hanging on the roof and stuff.
Okay.
Here's a picture of the service.
Oh, there it is, yeah, okay.
There's nothing to hook that K cable.
Yeah, it's got no K cable, and Eve wouldn't support it.
So, Scott, if we did not act on this particular property, and it sells at auction in October, is that, was that...
First. October 1st.
Okay.
And, and...
Then, is there another, then does the meter reset, and we go through everything again, or can then, at that point, then can we, would we have to have another public hearing again, for the, for the new owner?
Yeah, I would say, be it, we're doing this through, via your municipal code and not one of the building codes, yes.
So, we're in the...
You could, you could possibly tell us this evening that we should, we could put something on the deed of the property so that any future owner may be aware that there are these issues, and you'll take it up again.
I mean, could Jeremy include it in the disclaimer when he auctions it?
Well, there'll be, there's a big red sticker on there that says unsafe, unfit on the home itself.
The only thing we could do is put 90, 120, 60 or 90 days on it, and whoever the new owner needs to come in within, between October 1 and the 90-day termination, or 90 day in, and either show progress, show some work, or present a plan of action to the staff, is that...
I mean, I was thinking, I was thinking 45 days.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking that long, but I think we need to give her a chance to auction it.
Well, 45 days, 45 days puts it past the date that she wants to auction it, and I, and I think everybody else is 30 days. That's kind of where I'm at after publication, because it's not going to publish for a week and a half, two weeks, right? I mean, it's not going to publish tomorrow.
It'll publish, if you guys approve tonight, I'll spin tomorrow, and it should publish by, it should publish on Saturday.
Oh, okay.
If not, it'll publish next Tuesday.
Okay. Well, with that, you've got 45 days for publication. That gets it past her, and it puts the sense of urgency on the new person buying it, I guess is where my, my head goes. We haven't heard from any of the other properties, so 30 days, I mean, the staff has been working on this for years now. I don't think we should give them 92, 120 days. I said it's 30 days for publication, and then I would like, I'd like to give them 45 days to get past their auction date, but put pressure on the person who purchased it to come to step, to go, hey, listen, I'm doing something. But also, like, I don't want to see someone put a little bit of paint around one window and call that progress. I mean, that's the last thing that I wanted, to go through all of this and someone do that.
Only thing I would make a point here at this point in time is that it, we do run the risk of an out-of-state buyer, which, which makes it difficult for us to put leverage to do anything about this structure.
Well, in 45 days, if no one's contacted you, we tear it down.
Okay.
Because we've, we've already started the legal process.
Isn't that the way it works? After 45 days, or whatever time, 30 days, whatever time limit, at that point...
I think, you know, of ownership transfers, I think we probably ought to talk to Ashlyn about that.
That takes a while.
Because the owner might buy it with good intentions, but they may not be able to get to it for 45 days.
Right.
I thought the resolution was attached to the property, didn't matter who owned it.
Right, that's, that, that's what my head, I don't, that's what my head...
If that's wrong, tell me, but that's what I've got.
Well, you may be correct, but the... Well, you may be correct, but the property owner, the new property owner, owner of record has not been provided, um, due process in terms of the condemnation proceeding, so in other words, they didn't have an opportunity to come to a public hearing, voice their concerns or comments. And so, I guess we'd have to turn to legal counsel to determine where that lies. I don't know if it's with the address or with the actual property owner. My sense is, the, the house has no property rights, it's the property owner. And so when the property transfers, that new property owner has new rights that are protective that need to be, that need to go through the process. And, and part of this may be, you know, we could file these resolutions on the deed of the property too.
Right.
So that may clear it all up. In the meantime, because if you pass a resolution this mo- this evening, we're going to that same list that we did the title search with, notifying all those folks again with a copy of the resolution. And at that time, if we go ahead and file it with the register as deeds as well. So if there is any transfer of ownership, um, between the time of the publication and the notice to whatever date you set in the future. Scott, would there be any delay in terms of closing? So if there's an auction on the first, does that get automatically filed with the register of deeds, or is there a gap in that?
No, no, there's a gap.
There's a gap, yeah.
Because there's supposed to be a title, title search.
They have to do a title search.
So, so even if somebody buys it brand new, they're going to have, they're going to have at least several.
Yeah. I mean, if you fast track it, you could get it done in a week, but.
We've already done a title search, right?
Right, yes, yeah.
But they'll do it. So, yeah, we, we know.
We've done one, but.
Yeah.
And, 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 as this is coming to mind, it's similar to when we do, you know, when we would have do a street project, and a lot of folks notice they're liable for potential assessments that may not happen a few years, or a year down the road. That any transfer of ownership is aware of that.
I just don't want this property changing hands, and we have to go through this all, all over again, I guess is where I'm not with it. And I, I don't want to throw away your work.
That's where the property housing maintenance code, technically, she should have the new owner sign off on that.
Is that something?
Are, are you going to make sure that the people that buy this know that it's in trouble? I guess is my question to you.
Jeremy already goes, goes that.
Okay.
And it's being sold as is, whereas?
We're, we're just trying to get to a resolution on the structure itself. We're not trying to forget it any, any, no, we're just trying to deal with the structure itself.
So, did we figure out a timeframe?
I, I, I think, I appreciate forty-five days just to be prompt, but I think sixty days gives the new owner a chance to close, understand what they're dealing with, and then they either got to come back with, with a plan or, or, or.
On all the properties or just the one?
Just that one.
Just that one.
Okay, what are we thinking on all the others?
Thirty days, move on.
Okay, I.
My opinion.
Okay.
I just want to make sure they're here, trust the current, they're making an effort.
Yes.
I want to do all we can to make sure that they are made as whole as possible, so. And I think sixty days is the window that allows that to happen. That's my opinion. Anything else from staff, or questions of staff?
So, in the resolutions, there's no timeframe mentioned, does that need to be?
In, in your motions, there isn't, uh, on, if you look behind in the resolutions, there, we did leave that blank, give it days, so.
Thirty days.
Thirty days on all except two oh five North Washington, which is sixty, is what I'm getting.
What's the first resolution number?
Twenty-eight eighty-eight.
Twenty-eight eighty-eight, and that proceeds after that?
Yep.
Twenty-eight eighty-eight, you said?
Yes. Twenty-eight ninety-one, twenty-eight ninety-two. Okay. Should we put in the, in the resolu- in the, in the resolution that we're giving them sixty days? Or do you guys have that okay with, once we sign it, it'll be all right? We don't need to specifically call that out, do we?
Why don't, at the end, you just say, um, and the premises made safe and secure, um?
Within thirty days.
Within thirty days or within?
Within thirty, within sixty, I think.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
So you want to do that on all of them, within thirty?
Yes.
And within sixty, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Within thirty.
Okay, if there's no more further, no more questions or comments, I would entertain motions.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number twenty-eight eighty-eight, that a structure at eight oh two South Taylor is unsafe and dangerous, and directing the structure to be repaired or removed, and the premises made safe and secure within thirty days.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries four to zero. Entertain another motion.
You're rolling.
Yeah, go for it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number twenty-eight eighty-nine, that a structure at four twenty-six West Seventh, West Seventh is unsafe and dangerous, and directing the structure to be removed or repaired, that the premises be made safe within thirty days.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries four to zero. Entertain another motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number twenty-eight ninety, that a structure at two oh five North Washington is unsafe or dangerous, and directing the structure to be repaired or removed, and that the premises made safe and secure within sixty days.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries four to zero. Entertain another motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number twenty-eight ninety-one, that a structure at eleven oh seven West Carr is unsafe and dangerous, or unsafe or dangerous, and directing the structure to be repaired or removed, and that the premises be made safe and secure within thirty days.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries four to zero. The final motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number twenty-eight ninety-two, that a structure at eleven oh eight West Carr is unsafe or dangerous, and directing the structure to be repaired or removed, and the premises made safe and secure within thirty days.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries four to zero. Thank you, all. Thanks for your work. Next on our agenda would be special use permit, item number eleven, for one fourteen West Central Avenue.
Yes, Mayor and Commission, Mike and Gigi Dudak applied for a special use permit to allow public assembly venue, uh, one fourteen West Central Avenue. A public hearing was held on July twenty-fifth, and the planning commission recommended approval eight to zero. You can see on the slide here, um, one fourteen West Central Avenue is within the yellow box area. The definition of a public assembly venue is an establishment that primarily, primarily provides sufficient space, facilities for more than twenty people. So any gathering of twenty or more people, auditoriums, house of worship's, meeting halls, community centers. So, in the C two district, a special use permit is required to have a public assembly venue. What's allowed today in C two is retail, restaurant, office, medical clinic. You see those before you. And as you see, um, public assembly venue is allowed with a special use permit. So I stand for any questions you may have specific on this. As I said, the planning commission did hold a public hearing on July twenty-fifth and voted eight to zero to recommend approval.
So they're meeting now?
They, they had started, they're unaware, they came into the office to talk about steps for remodeling, what would need to be involved to, uh, if, update the structure. Made them aware of the situation that they applied for a special use permit.
So this also constitutes an occupancy change for the building?
This, uh, Mr. Preachey?
Scott?
Yes?
Um, they're asking a question, um, does this constitute, this zoning at one fourteen West Central, an occupancy change? Since I have the official. The worship center?
Yeah, would you go up, thank you.
We need to get up to speed here, and I'm discussing one of these other pieces of property. Okay.
Um, the mayor's asked if the, going from its previous use to the worship center, if that's going to be occupancy change on the structure. I mean, granted, we're talking about the use of the property here this evening and, uh, and, and all that. And I know they're engaging an architect and starting that process. So we really have not seen a code footprint or anything.
No, not as of yet. Uh, this, this is, uh, the one that you brought into the office, and we had a meeting with, right? Okay, yeah, yeah. I notified them that they could, uh, the, the number isn't, uh, the amount of people that have entered, going into assembly, so.
So that moves it from likely, uh, it was down at B occupancy to an A occupancy, right?
Yes.
So it is an occupancy change to the building?
Yeah, they were hazy on the amount of worshippers they would have.
At this point, it wouldn't matter, we have one or a hundred, it'd be an occupancy change, right?
Yes, sir.
But I'm assuming there's a limit to building occupancy?
Yeah, we, we have numbers in the code that, that trigger occupancy. It's difficult, we can look at it for what it is, it is an assembly, if it's seven, but we do have a number that, that triggers it, especially on the fire code and especially in the building.
But the special use permits allows them to have more than twenty. Right now.
That's a trigger for delay of use, yeah.
Okay, right now, they can have up to twenty. But if they're successful with their special use permit, then they can have more than twenty, correct?
Yeah, and going back to your definition within your zoning regs, when you exceed that twenty in a C two district, it needs to be a special use permit, you need to have a public hearing for that type of venue to be placed in C two. Um, because generally, i- if you have a venue that's, uh, drawing more folks, it takes up downtown parking, it, uh, things like that. Just adding those discussions impacts adjacent property owners.
According to their letter, they're currently holding meetings during the evening so that it wouldn't cause problem with downtown parking.
But once this, if, if, once this is in effect, or even now, I mean, they could have it during the day, correct?
There's nothing that says.
Again, now, during the day.
Right.
And, and I guess I'll leave it to, you know, with the fact that I'm going to go back to the occupancy change and the burdens associated with an assembly building, and that they were made fully aware of all those. It's not a land use issue, I have a problem with the land use issue, uh, as well, um, only because, um, and I, and again, I don't, I don't mean to be, I don't mean to this to sound like I'm not for a house of prayer, but I have a trouble with, with, with a building that could end up, a property that could end up being a ch- church in our downtown, and all of the other restrictions that places on the adjacent property owners for, for future use. Prime example is distance to, to drinking establishments and other entertainment venues. And whether or not the city, I mean, the adjacent property owners don't know that's coming until they're trying to do something else with their property. So, I, again, I, I don't, nothing against the house of worship, I, I just, I, I struggle with that being in our downtown.
Mr. Mayor, after your question last week at the, at the work session, I contacted the attorney. We, we had tried to work, uh, Jay Shivers, and I had tried to work through some of the, um, state statutes on it, and, and weren't clear exactly what it said, so we contacted the attorney. And, uh, Zach said that restaurants would not have any problem, they, they are not actually affected by the two hundred foot rule. It's only microbreweries, distilleries, wineries, and.
Retailers.
Retail liquor, thank you.
Okay.
And because of the existing zoning in our downtown, if someone wanted to do something like that, and this church was approved, they, um, the city commission, um, could through us waive that two hundred foot rule.
So, so we have home rule over that twenty, two hundred foot rule?
Yes, only because of how it, Zach said, only because of how it's currently zoned downtown, because it's, it's a commercial district already.
And, tell me who Zach is?
Zach is our attorney that's subbing for Ashlyn while she's on attorney leave.
Thank you.
And, and there is, there are, uh, there is federal acts in place that limit local government's authority over religious institutions and where they're allowed to go, where they are not. So that, that's why specifically you see the definition or zoning regs as public assembly venue, not church. So we're discussing a public assembly vent- venue that has the potential to have more than twenty people.
Okay. Based on, based on the, the strict rule of a public assembly, I don't have a problem other than I'll make sure that they understand the difference between occupancy permits, occupancy change.
Yes, yes.
And what, and what the building is now burdened with being an assembly building.
I think we, we've made them aware, because the upper floors habitable, and I would say that the lower floor has been habitable in nature too.
So do we have a different, uh, classification for public assembly venue and place of worship? Same thing?
Yeah, same thing.
Same thing.
Okay.
I'm correct, they're redoing the apartment upstairs?
We, we don't have a real plan in place or a code footprint, so we're not quite sure. But I, I made them aware of, of the impediments that it would take to do that. Once you start trying to make the upper floor assembly, then it creates a real financial burden on them to be able to use both floors.
Okay, because they, they, in their comments, they pointed out that they were redoing the upstairs to live in.
Yeah.
Actually, it says they already moved in.
Well, okay.
Again, land use issue, I, I appreciate these conversations, just want to make sure it's crystal clear to them that they understand what changing this occupancy permit of this building means.
Yes, so.
What does that mean, Vince? I, I'm, I'm.
Well, there's, there's, you know, it's, it's, um, basically sprinkler systems, fire rated walls, fire rated floor ceiling assemblies, several things like that, that, that allow an occupancy, an A occupancy to exist with a, next to a B, or in a B, or with an R.
Yeah.
All of that, so. I'm going to let their architect get through all of those, it's not.
Absolutely.
But that's, um, uh, I just want to make it crystal clear what they're getting into.
So you're saying that if we change it to a public assembly, is that what we're calling it?
No, no, we are saying this property is currently zoned C two. They are asking for a special use permit to allow public assembly, per the definition in your zoning regs. At that time, and when we met with him, we made him clear, you know, and he gets a design professional, talk about what your vision is, a building official, talked to him at length, and was a fire marshal even there in that meeting, I, I was a while back, I can't recall, but. They need to get the land use in place, and then they're going to start talking and working on the, working out the other details that are involved.
Yeah, and I, and based on conversations of, of, we just, just had and clarifications, I don't have a problem with the land use. Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Scott.
Okay.
Both Scots, thanks, Scott. Well, I entertain a motion.
G thirteen ten, that's the number.
I guess before doing that, in the past, we've started making the comments or reading the standard for review. I think probably appropriate that I do that before anybody makes a motion. So we say on public record what, what the staff and what the planning commission considered as they, as they approved it.
Would you want me to read that, Mayor?
I'm happy to. Standard for review is, A, location and size of the proposed use in relation to the site and to adjacent sites and uses of the property, and the nature and intensity of operations proposed thereon. Response is, the applicant expects a maximum of fifteen people congregating in the structure at any given time. Though actual maximum occupancy will be determined by the building and fire code, the nature and intensity of the proposed use is consistent with the surrounding uses that also generate varying levels of traffic and visitors, such as nearby retail, restaurant, office, museum, and institutional uses. Next is accessibility of the property to police, fire, refuse, collection, and other municipal services, adequacy of ingress and egress and to and within the site, traffic flow and control, and the adequacy of off-street parking and loading areas. Response is, the site is accessible by all emergency services. Properties in C two zonings are exempt from parking requirements. The city re-provides parking in the downtown area, including on-street parking directly in front of the building along west central, and a, and a public parking lot on the north side of the property. Next is utilities and services, including water, sewer, drainage, gas, and electricity, with particular reference to location and availability, capacity, and compatibility. Response is, property has access to all utilities and adequate capacity is available. Next is location, nature, and height of structures, walls, fences, and other improvements, their relation to adjacent properties and uses, and the need for buffering or screening. The applicant, in response is, the applicant plans to use the existing structure on the property. According to Butler County records, the structure was built in nineteen hundred, features two thousand one hundred ninety-two square feet of commercial space on the main floor, one thousand three hundred seventy-five square feet of commercial space, and eight hundred and seventy-five square feet of residential space on the second floor. No new structures are proposed. The structure and property is consistent with other properties in the central business district. No buffering or screening is required, needed, or possible. Next is the adequacy of required yard and open space requirements and sign provisions. Response is, no new structures or signs are proposed. Lastly, the, the general compatibility with adjacent properties and other properties in the district, and the general safety, health, comfort, and general welfare of the community. Response is, public assembly venues are compatible with the existing uses in the downtown area, and is of a size that will not overwhelm existing parking infrastructure in the downtown area. And I'll note, we'll note again that it passed planning commission unanimously. With that, I entertain a motion.
You said it's ordinance G thirteen dash ten?
G dash thirteen ten.
I'm sorry, come again.
G dash thirteen ten.
Okay, put the dash in the wrong place. Okay, I move to approve case number nineteen dash zero five dash SUP, requesting an SUP for a public assembly venue, and that ordinance number G dash thirteen ten be approved.
Second.
So we're moving in second, any further question or comment?
So, to, let's say we don't want this to pass. All four of us have to vote no, since we are overriding the planning commission. Is that a correct statement?
To, yeah, to reverse the recommendation of super majority of the city commission.
But just passes with three.
Yes.
Yeah. Anything else? Uh, being none, roll call.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis is absent, Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkens?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Thanks, everyone, for the conversation. Next on our agenda is project number five five six, resurfacing Sixth Street, Metcalf to El Rico.
Bear with me, I'll pull, pull the map up for y'all.
Sure.
This is part of our annual, um, street sales tax funds. Project was bid for the resurfacing, resurfacing of Sixth Avenue. And you can see that section here, from Metcalf Road east to about El Rico Court, as well as Haverhill Road from Tuanda north to Central Avenue. The bid came in at two hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred ninety dollars and fifty-five cents, and that low bidder being Flint Hills Material. Tonight, we're asking you to consider allowing the city manager to award the contract, providing they provide the proper bonds.
And that bids for both of them?
Yes, for both, both sections there you see on the map before you. We got really favorable prices on asphalt. My estimate for the project was, combined was four hundred and sixteen thousand nine sixty-seven. The highest bidder was at four hundred forty-nine thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars. Some others in the mid-three fifties, and Flint Hills Material came in at two hundred eighty-three thousand.
So on your map, you have a red portion that talks about concrete.
Yes.
Patching.
So there will be some concrete repaired in the intersection.
And that's at Tuanda and Haverhill.
Tuanda, there by the college.
Yep.
Okay.
Which is good, there's been some issues with.
Yes.
With uneven pavement through there, is that what you're talk, is that what we're talking about?
I'm sorry.
Uneven pavement through there.
Yeah, and, and there, and there has been a number of times over the years. I think that being first paved, probably mid-nineties, somewhere in there, when the signals were installed and everything, there had a lot of settling issues. There has been sections that have been removed, and drains have been put in, different types of aggregate. So there are some originals left that need to be repaired as well, and some that have already had repairs, so. Just lots of heavy truck traffic, lots of.
Is that included in the bid?
That is included as well.
Okay.
Great, thank you. All right, any further questions on this topic? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that since Flint Hills Materials LLC has submitted the lowest and best bid of two hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred ninety dollars and fifty-five cents for project number five fifty-six, the city manager be directed to award the contract to said contractor, providing that the company furnish the proper bonds.
Second.
Okay, so we're moving in second, any further question or comment? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Next would be project number five five seven, residential street resurfacing.
Yes, so this is milling overlay on the streets you see in front of you. So High Street from Central Avenue to Third Avenue, High Street, Hauser Street, and Atchison Street from Third Avenue to Sixth Avenue. This, again, being part of your sales tax fund for street rehab. Project was bid, low bidder as well on this project was Flint Hills Material. We submitted a bid of a hundred and forty thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-five cents, and. Below my estimate of a hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Just to explain to me, on, on High Street, there between Third and Sixth, you have intersections that have, what, a polygon shape? Then further down, you have a half a polygon shape?
Oh, so those are areas where, say, in, in, in this neighborhood, these blocks have been repaired at some time, but they did not go into the intersection. So we are not gonna do that. Like, right here, Second Avenue has been paved to clear through, so we'll jump that section of asphalt.
Okay, and then when you get down to Atchison, that intersection.
Just going further back.
Further, okay.
Yep.
Just wanna understand your graphics.
Yep, yep.
Thank you. Any further questions? None, I entertain a motion.
I move that since Flint Hills Materials LLC has submitted the lowest and best bid of a hundred and forty thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-five cents for project number five fifty-seven, the city manager be directed to award the contract to said contractor, providing that the company furnish the proper bonds.
Second.
Okay, so we're moving in second, any further question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Next on our agenda is recycling conversation. This is a conversation we had at our work session last week. And decided to move it on to city commission meeting for action so that staff could make with confidence, send out letters and start appropriate actions pertaining to the recycling program. Any from staff or anything else to add at this point?
Well, as you all know, the recycling markets have deteriorated over the last year or so. And that has, that has caused a number of things to happen. Number one, the cost of hauling materials has increased from fifty-five dollars to now seventy-five dollars. We anticipate another increase in September, up to ninety dollars per ton, I should say that those are all in tons. In addition to that, it has also become more difficult to find haulers that are interested in hauling our material, simply because there's no secondary market for them to ship the materials to. And so many of the haulers are, are pulling out of the business, or at least temporarily not serving that, that specific segment of the, of the industry. So as a result of that, staff has been monitoring the situation and has been attempting to find solutions or additional haulers, or folks that might be able to provide some solution to the situation. In addition to that, as you all know already, Butler County Landfill will accept material for thirty-five dollars a ton, although that material will be taken to the landfill. So it's not, it won't be recycled at that point. We brought this issue to your attention several months ago, and then, again, here, probably a week or so ago. And at that, during that duration of time, the markets have not gotten any better, in fact, they've gotten worse. And so staff has prepared the following options for your consideration. Continue the recyc, the residential recycling program, but significantly increase the refuse fee to mitigate the financial impact of the refuse fund. Continue the residential recycling program and monitor the recycling markets in case the pricing realigns with a more sustainable model. Under this, under this option, we would look at probably a six-month period, see if markets stabilize, or if there's an opportunity to return to a sustainable level, and then bring that back to you all for, for consideration. The third option is to discontinue the residential recycling program altogether and divert all of those materials to the Butler County landfill. And then, of course, if the commission desires any additional information, we're more than happy to, to gather that information for you all. At this point, it's really become a matter of the market deteriorating to the point that we can't get rid of the materials, and it's just become a cost prohibitive to continue to provide the service without, without a substantial fee increase. The good news is, the Butler County landfill is not, is not a landfill that is close to being at capacity. One could actually argue that because we've been recycling for twenty-five years or so, it's actually added capacity to the landfill. So it's not a matter of, you know, we need to, we need to recycle because the landfill is near a capacity like some communities have in their, in their landfills. The Butler County landfill does have capacity and can accept our, our, our waste stream right now. In fact, we've actually been diverting some of this mater, actually all of our material to the landfill due to some, some issues we've been having with haulers, as well as some equipment breakdown that has prevented us from, from collecting recyclables like we need to. Part of the challenge is also related to China, and they, they're the largest market for recyclable materials. It was only a few years ago that they decided to shut the gates for imported recyclable materials from the United States. And the primary reason for that is a very significant quantity of recyclable materials they imported into China were being classified as trash, because they were dirty and could not, you know, they, they, the Chinese couldn't process them in a manner that they could get a reasonable return on their investment. So they closed the gates and made it, made it very difficult for Americans to recycle. Since that time, recyclable programs throughout the country, as well as state of Kansas, have, have been experiencing more and more difficulty, increasing prices and volatility, and that's kind of where we are right now. So based on, based upon that industry trend, monitoring the events over the last year plus, I am recommending that we discontinue the residential recycling program effective immediately to mitigate our expenses, and also asking the commission to allow for an opportunity to continue to monitor and review the cardboard, the commercial cardboard program for the forty-five days to determine if it should be continued or discontinued based on that market. So we have kind of two different markets, but the primary one that we're talking about today is residential recycling, and then the second one is the, the commercial cardboard. So with that, I'll, I'll take any questions that you all may have, based on that.
When you say immediately, that means?
Two weeks ago.
Tomorrow. Yeah, in essence, tomorrow. But to my point, we have been diverting material to the Butler County landfill now, so in essence, that was a temporary thing, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna see that situation resolve itself. And so I guess now I'm asking for your consideration to permanently discontinue that.
So then that leads to the questions, do I still get my two trash bins for trash?
Good question, so the answer to that is, in order to make this as simple as possible, residential customers will still retain their two trash, their two containers. They can sort it all they want, but it will all go to the Butler County landfill. So for all intents and purposes, you'll have two trash carts at your convenience. At some point in the future, we may, we may look at that program and we may change that, but right now, we are going to allow residents to retain two carts, and that will be included in their current fee. And we'll pick them up just as normal. It's just the material will be taken to the landfill as opposed to taking to the recycling center where it can be sorted and packaged and diverted.
And what will happen to the recycling center?
The recycling center at this point will no longer be a recycling center. The employees that work there will be reclassified or transferred into other positions in the public works department. And that's, the, I believe the commercial cardboard program will still be operated out of the recycling center, but we will not be accepting drive-throughs or drop-offs for recyclable materials otherwise.
Question I've, that, I guess the one thing that I will say is that, about a year ago, we raised the rate, a year and a half ago, raised the rates a buck for recycling. I, I think that needs to go, needs to go away, go back to wherever it was a year ago. Um, I, I think that needs to go, needs to go away, go back to wherever it was a year ago. I don't, did we raise it a dollar? No, we did?
Uh, yes, we went to fourteen seventy-five to fifteen seventy-five.
Yeah, okay. I, I think that dollar needs to, needs to go back to fourteen seventy-five. So, do we need to do that in here? Did we raise that as a, as a motion, or did we? Or is that we just said it, went on?
Um, I believe that's actually an ordinance that we'll have to bring back to you all for consideration.
But, we're still gonna have two carts.
Yes.
So... When we did that, that was just to cover the, that extra dollar was just to cover the cost of...
The raising of the prices of the shipping, and... Because we went from getting paid for our recycling three and a half years ago, to now paying for it to go, correct?
That, that dollar was to cover, to help offset the difference between the thirty-five dollars a ton to the fifty-five dollars a ton. That was to help offset that sum at that point. Um, I, I just wanna make a couple of clarifications. Until the commercial cardboard, if it should cease, that is when the, the remaining two employees that are funded through the recycle budget, uh, which is in the sanitation budget. But, those two employees will remain doing what they're doing today. Uh, one is a route driver, the other is a processor down there that would, someone would still need to process that cardboard collected on the commercial, on the commercial side. So, those two, those two employees will remain until, if the, if the commission sees fit to cease that program as well. If they don't, then those two employees will, will remain, do, will stay doing what they're doing. Because they're not going to, because the one is not going to be processing residential recycling material, that employee will be reassigned when not processing commercial, uh, cardboard, will be reassigned to the compost site, which we have had lots of people want to pay a fee or to have a fee charge to keep, to keep someone down there, to have someone down there. So, I would maybe caution against turning the dollar back, uh, and help that to fund, potentially fund an employee for down there as well, which we have never had a budgeted employee down there. That's something to ponder as you move on, because it doesn't have to be decided tonight. But, if, if that person, if, if you should cease the cardboard operation, that's when all operations down there will, will cease.
Personally, I would happily pay a dollar a month to keep the compost side...
Well, and I, I, I just, we specifically said we're raising a dollar to keep the, raise it a dollar to keep the recycling going. So, if we do that, we need to specifically say that that's what that money is going towards. I just, I, I don't want it to be that, you know, we raised it, and then we canceled it, and then we just kept getting that extra money.
Right, but if we're gonna create a new position of putting, because one trip to the, to the landfill with limbs is ten bucks.
Right.
So, if you go one time down here, that's almost your whole year.
Yeah.
So, I would be in favor of leaving the, the dollar if it's gonna help ensure that we keep the compost side open.
We've heard that a lot. When we, when we closed it to clean it up here a few weeks ago, and, um, we have lots of comments, as you can imagine, but that was one of them, that you need to fund a position to keep someone down there. Now, uh, there would still be other duties that he, that that employee would have at the recycling center, obviously. Uh, but, uh, there will be, there will be time made available for that person to be at the compost site as well.
Well, there'll be other costs associated for putting somebody down there, I'm assuming. I mean, are we gonna, you're gonna need to put, let's just go and set them in a truck at the gate.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my plan for right now, just see how that goes.
Okay.
I mean, and I think that's a, a reasonable, we've ne, and honestly, we have never had anyone down there. I mean, it's...
Yeah, I know.
It, it has, it, it commenced in nineteen ninety-six, and so, from nineteen ninety-six to today, we've never had to have someone down there. Today, it's, it's fairly mandatory that someone is down there.
How's it, just sidebar, how's it been down there since you shut it down?
Terrible.
Still? Okay.
Is it ready to be shut down again?
It's not asking.
Yeah.
Don't walk off, Brad.
It, I mean, it, it, I, I will tell you that, uh, the other morning had KDHE come and done an inspection, and fortunately for us, we had, we had two deficiencies on our most recent inspection. One, obviously, controlling litter, controlling trash, uh, and the other was ponding water. Uh, because we had a, if you don't know, that, that site sits on top of an old landfill. And so, anytime you have an old landfill, and you have people driving on it, you create soft spots, you create holes, and we constantly are filling holes with rock and, and all that. Um, we rolled piles, and we had holes. So, we got a deficiency on ponding water and controlling litter. Uh, the, the day before, the gal came back from Topeka to inspect our deficiencies, um, we, we had taken care of them. But had she had come the next day, we would have been in trouble. Uh, we had thirteen tires delivered to us, under a pile of brush, um, a recliner, several things that didn't belong, the dumpster loaded back up, et cetera, et cetera. So, had she had come the next day, and, and KDHE didn't care about the dumpster. They don't care how much people use that dumpster. They care about what's on the ground.
Right.
What's in the piles, we know what's on the ground, so... She, they would not have been happy.
Okay, thank you.
What's the resolution number?
Twenty-eight ninety-three.
Ninety-three?
I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution G, is it G twenty-nine, or just twenty-eight ninety-three?
It's twenty-eight ninety-three.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sunset the residential recycling program and providing guidance on the continuation of the commercial cardboard recycling program.
Second. Any further discussion?
I think it should be pointed out that we're doing this with a great deal of regret.
And with a lot of effort to keep it going for the last two years.
Yes.
Four years, actually.
Twenty-twelve.
When it started.
Was when we started.
This is not an easy decision that we have to make. It's okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries four to zero. Reports, anything from the city commission? Activities or reports from the commission?
Uh, Parks and Rec meets this coming Wednesday for kind of a reorganization of their advisory board. Should be an interesting meeting. Basically, all I have.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Inc. met last week, but I wasn't able to attend, so I don't have anything to report, specifically. So, no, I don't have anything.
What's the library?
Monday coming, Monday, no.
I got it, I got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the Sunlight Advocacy ribbon cutting, or the, yeah, the Sunlight Advocacy, the Sunlight...
Child's.
Children's.
Scarf.
Scarf, we'll go with that.
Yes.
Scarf is having a ribbon cutting on Thursday, the twenty-second. Um, so that will be this Thursday, from four to seven o'clock. If you're available and can make it, I just kind of noticed today in the mail. Um, so that, that will be Thursday at, from four to seven, at their offices on, at two oh five East Twelfth Street. Ball youth sports registration deadline is this Friday. You can either sign up online, or at the Parks and Rec office right here at City Hall. Um, I believe that's flag football, soccer...
Volleyball.
And volleyball. In addition to that, on Friday, Bradford Memorial Library will celebrate its sixtieth anniversary celebration. Um, that will be from eleven AM to one PM. We're gonna have birthday cake and cookies and a number of other things. So, if you're available, swing by, the Bradford Memorial Library on Washington Street.
That's this Thursday, this Friday?
Yes, this Friday. No?
I don't think so.
It's on the thirtieth, isn't it?
Yeah, the thirtieth.
So, next Friday.
Thirtieth. Thank you.
Yeah, August thirtieth. Um, Labor Day is on September second, so there'll be no commission meeting. Um, city offices will also be closed. It will be the following day, which will be September third, so it will be on Sunday, Monday will be on Tuesday that day. Um, the League of Kansas Municipalities Annual Conference is coming up, is anyone interested in attending that? Judging by that, I'll go with no. Um, based upon the decision here about recycling, we do have a letter that we will be sending out to every address in town, residential address in town. That, that letter is currently a draft form, but will be going out, um, very soon, probably today, or not today, but within the next couple of days. Um, so people will be apprised of what's going on, as well as what they can do with their trash carts and, and those kind of things. So, it explains all that. Um, and then just some fun stuff, the Public Utilities Department was recognized as a utility of the future by the National Association of Clean Water Agencies, and several other water-related groups. Uh, the recognition celebrates the utility's forward-thinking and innovation achievement, particularly in community engagement, watershed stewardship, and recovery of resources. Uh, since two thousand and sixteen, only a hundred and ten utilities have been selected for this recognition nationwide. So, it's kind of a cool thing. Um, in addition to that recognition, the Water Reclamation Facility has also been named as Kansas's wastewater plant of the year by the Kansas Water Environment Association for the ninth time. So, the plant is winning awards. Um, that's all I have for now. Any questions?
Questions with David? Thank you for the updates. I guess the only thing I would add right now, it's, it's hot out there, so keep your interest in it. If nothing, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Moving to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero, we are adjourned, thank you.